Clark?
Present.
Trustee Drapka?
Present in attendance.
Trustee Lupfer is not in attendance. Trustee Hollenbach?
Present.
Supervisor Wolt?
Here.
Let the record note Clerk Plausen in attendance.
Thank you. And we have the minutes of the November twenty first meeting in front of us. What is your pleasure? Are there any additions or corrections?
I don't see any.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of November twenty first, two thousand and seventeen.
I have a motion by Trustee Hollenbach to approve the minutes of November twenty first, two thousand and seventeen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Alrighty. Are there any communications?
Oh, several. Okay, we have a thank you note from the Riverside Art Center for their annual gala for our ad in their book. For their event that was on October twenty first, and they thanked us for a hundred twenty-five dollar donation. There's a letter here about summer camp facility. I hope that you enjoyed the holiday season. On behalf of the department, I wanted to sincerely thank you and the township for board for the usage of the township for our summer camp. It was from the Riverside Parks and Recreation. That's Plausen sent us a thank you note for their, our financial contribution of three thousand dollars on eleven twenty-two. Vera received a letter from the Aging Care Connections that they are sincerely grateful for writing you today to thank you for the Riverside Township Board of Trustees awarding Aging Care Connection a five thousand dollar grant. And that's it. Thank you.
Can I see the program or the agenda of the program?
Sure.
I don't think the correspondence requires any action, so. Thank you. We'll place that on file. And on to, are there any visitors' remarks? Nope. Alright.
Are you doing here for a school assignment?
Yes.
Okay. Fenwick students?
Yes.
My kid's alma mater. Okay, then supervisors' report. In general, it was a fairly busy time. We've, we've had quite a few requests for Nurses Closet and quite a bit of food pantry activity of late. I do attribute some of that to the newsletter. It seems like people were not aware of some of it. Not, not, I haven't put too much in on the building use at this point, although I'm still trying to keep things organized. But we did have a few non-traditional requests in this recent weeks. Classical Conversations is a group that supports homeschoolers. And they had asked for two to three rooms on a weekly basis for homeschooling support. And it would, there would be like two sessions. There would be a fall session of twelve weeks and a spring session of twelve weeks. I said that that would be quite a bit of use of the building. They're talking about from eight AM till three PM, one day a week. The first day they asked for was a bit much. I'm not presenting this, this grant request yet because it, it wouldn't be until next school year. But I wanted to make sure that it fits into our parameters because it's, although, it's called Classical Conversations. As I said, it's a method. It's, they describe themselves as coming from a Christian worldview, but they're not affiliated with any church or specific religion. And it's to support and supplement those who are homeschoolers. They, it would be twenty-four sessions of this, twelve in the fall and twelve in the spring. Since we're still working on our, you know, building utilization, I just wanted you to be aware that we did get this grant request. This is off-season for the request, but.
Is it a grant? Are they asking for money or are they just asking for the?
Well, no, they're, they're asking, yeah, it's, so, I'm sorry, it's not a grant request, but they're asking for the use of the building. But it was just, it was a lot of utilization, and I wanted to make sure, since I believe that there is a fee for it. They, they're not an organized group. These are folks who homeschool in the community. This would serve the community. But it's, they currently go to a facility in Hinsdale, and the group is growing so much that they're outgrowing it. So this group wanted to break away and kind of form their own cluster. So I wanted you to be aware of. I'm still going to be looking for more information. I told them that it would be kind of a strain on the building to make that much of a commitment. It would be twenty-four out of fifty-two weeks of the year. And major utilization during that time, so.
Are they a nonprofit group?
Well, that's, they don't list themselves as a nonprofit per se. And that's where I'm still trying to gather some more information about it. And because it's so far out, they were putting out feelers when I spoke to her, and I said that it might be a problem because there would be so much and because they, you know, because we serve nonprofits.
Yeah.
They're, they're more of a, more of a community, general support group to each other. Because they're all homeschoolers, so they look for methods to do some things together. Says, let's see, "Our group has been meeting in Hinsdale, but we've grown too large, and we'd like to create a Riverside chapter. It's a very conscientious group of families. We're in the habit of setting up and taking down our own tables and cleaning up after ourselves, and we're very respectful of property." This is something that might work. They've also reached out to the library. So, like I said, it's just under discussion, but in case you heard about it, I didn't want you to be surprised by any discussion of that because we, we were afraid that it might be a quasi-religious kind of approach. But they assure me that they're not affiliated with any church. They do come from a conservative point of view and a, as they said, Christian worldview. Anyway, we also have had very preliminary discussions. Actually, Trustee Lupfer had a conversation with someone from Riverside TV who wants to do a cooking show, and they will want to use our kitchen. But they would take care of all of it. It wouldn't be us putting it together. They're just looking for the facility. So again, very early in the process, I told them how to go about asking for building utilization and so forth. And then we had someone walk in the other day, again, asking about holding a shower here. And it was like, we're really not doing that for individuals at this point. So, and then I had a request within the last two days for utilization of the building for a large event that I don't think that we can accommodate. And that would be for a daddy-daughter dinner dance, so. Daddy-daughter dinner dance, alliterative.
I have a question about the shower. So what, what was the response to that?
Well, we told her that it's really, at this point, it's only reserved for nonprofit organizations, that we don't rent the space for that. And, and this was, again, this was going to be very soon, and it was like, we really can't pledge that. We said, we're looking at the possibility, but it was kind of out of the blue. She just walked in and said, yeah, I'd like to rent the hall. I was like, yeah, no, it's not happening. Anyway, otherwise Riverside, as you may have read in the landmark, is, the village is doing a facilities study. And it was kind of interesting to be mentioned as, that they would have to reach out to us, but it was in the paper first. And so then, like, within two days, I was approached by the village manager inviting us to participate if we'd be interested in checking out our building facilities utilization as well. I said, well, let me see what, what that would cost, and so I have not heard from their consultant on that yet. They also, in the same request, indicated that they plan to do tuck pointing on the portion of the building that they own. And in the process, it certainly would be recommended that we do the whole building at once and not have it. They would go through all of the steps of working with the historical commission and so forth to make sure they're actually questioning, and I've wondered about that myself, whether the red mortar between the stones was actually the original design or not. So they would be doing all of that research, but I'm going to get a quote for doing our part of the building. I'm sure it would be more cost-effective if we did all of it at once. And I did walk around the building with the, the Director of Public Works to take a look at where, and we do have some places, especially around the back of the building, next to the police station. You know, there are some gaps where I could put my hand in, you know, it's, so there are, there is some, some area where it's more than just tuck pointing. There's some mortar issues, and we want to make sure that we preserve that before it gets into trouble. I'm presuming that that wouldn't happen until spring, but while they're getting their quotes, I'm also going to participate in finding out what that is. I don't have a clue right now.
Okay, it's gonna be huge.
Yeah, it, it's going to be a big project, I mean. And of course, doing something like that may raise some other things about the building. But this is part of why we have and need to maintain reserves for projects like this. So, just again.
Let me ask one question on that. What part does the village own of this township hall?
So, the addition that's on the west side of the building. And I can, I can pull up, there are, there's some paperwork about that because there's been a lot of discussion of that over the years. As a matter of fact, I've had some anecdotal conversations that, well, they were supposed to be paying us rent. Well, it turns out, there was negotiation for an intergovernmental agreement for that to happen that apparently was never executed. So I don't know where it broke down. This was maybe ten years ago. So, they, I mean, we, we can get you some more detailed information. But it's basically what looks like an addition. So it would be past, yeah, it's, it's all of this part that you see here. There's a separate entrance. The, the back is a different brick.
Wait, are you talking about over here or over here, you mean?
No, over here. Now, they also, of course, have the police station over there. But over here, they, there's offices in here. All of this is the village's part of the building.
So they, they take care of everything from that office wall there by the library?
Yeah.
All the way through, including our office?
No, not to our office, only up to the hallway here.
Up to the hallway?
Right, and then they have some space downstairs. And then, of course, they've got the police facilities, and they've got the other buildings around here.
So we don't have the police or the fire department that's not part of the town, not part of township?
No, that's, that's the village, that's right. So we've got the core building.
Yeah, so, I, I'm sorry, did you want discussion on this now or under new business?
I'm just bringing you up to date on some of the work that I anticipate it's going to be. It's not really, yeah, there's something on the agenda about it, I believe, now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we can bring that up under.
Yeah, so we can discuss it further than.
Yeah, because I didn't, I didn't want to take up time with your report, but I also have a bunch of questions on it too, so.
Okay, I don't know if I can answer them, but I'll certainly make notes and, and find out. Also, there's been discussion, Trustee Lupfer introduced me to the Student Services Director at Riverside Brookfield High School because they were inquiring about the possibility of some funding for scholarships, for activities, sports fees, such things, for those who are in need but are not in enough need to qualify for free services like that. So this is probably mostly for people who are, who have some food subsidy, but not the full lunch program. We've had some discussions. I, I suggested that what they probably would need to do is set up some kind of a scholarship structure where then we could make a grant to it, sort of like North Riverside does with their scholarship program. So, again, very preliminary discussions. Christmas meals, I'll be shopping for hams this week. Next week, the first three days of the week are the official days for families to pick that up. And on the food pantry side, Hauser has made a commitment to regular drop-offs, but I contacted them late last month because we, or early this month, because I hadn't heard from them in November. They'd been in October. So last week, I had two drops of fifteen cases of canned goods each time. So different organizations then bring it over. So we had a group called Roots and Shoots, which is kind of a green earth kind of organization, and then the other was the girls' basketball team. And that's about all I have to report at this time. Are there any? Yes?
The Lions Club is having their Christmas dinner, and they ask people to bring food to donate to the township pantry.
And that's happening tonight, so tomorrow we'll be going over to Scottish Home to pick that up.
We had spoken in the past about with those dinners that we're preparing to include some kind of toys or something along those lines?
And we've been kind of monitoring, we've been checking the questions. We don't have a lot of people with small children. So I think instead, I'm probably going to include something like a tin of cookies or a tin of popcorn or something that's kind of gifty but not, not toys because we didn't really discover that there were a lot of children, at least within our pantry utilization. We have much more elderly people, I would say, that, that take it, or people with some physical disabilities and so forth, more so than families with children. I have a few that are on general assistance that have children, but they're not small children. Most of them are teenagers.
Could we maybe next year plan for like having some sort of a toy drive, just in general terms?
We certainly can. There are a couple of drop boxes in the hallway, too, for other kinds of collections. I don't want to become collection central for all kinds of things. I know that the veteran, the American Legion, when they were here during the Christmas, the holiday stroll, they asked about putting a box out there, and to be honest with you, I, at this moment, I don't know if it's out there or not. I told them to have a list of things that they would like for the vets, and, but certainly, we can look at a toy drive next year.
Yeah, there's a great, the Community Nurses Association has a great secret Santa program. The kids have to qualify for it, which means they have to do some checkups and certain things. And I checked, and there's not many Riverside residents involved in that. But I know we're active with the Community Nurses Association, that kind of thing, so that might be a great.
Isn't that mainly LaGrange?
Yeah, mostly LaGrange and Western Springs and such, mostly, yeah.
This, the.
But we'll see what we can do. We'll see what we can find for next year.
It not only gives them some toys and, it's like a hundred and twenty-five dollars per participant. It also gets them some vaccinations and that kind of thing, so it maximizes the benefits.
I know that we work with them from our Suckle organization, and so we have, we always have a tree up where people just bring in mittens and hats. It's all that kind of thing, and they always find them homes. Alright, anything else? Any other questions on my report before we go on to trustees' reports? Any trustees' reports?
I have, I have a report.
Yes.
Oh, you're right.
I'm sorry, making notes.
We had a great senior holiday party at the golf club, and we had a group called the Frozen Robins that are very interactive that came and sang. I think everybody had a good time. And then also, I've mentioned this to Vera and to Trustee Hollenbach, I'd like to do a panel in, towards the end of February on a Saturday afternoon on the opiate crisis. And get, you know, kind of why it happened and, you know, how it is being handled in our community and stuff. So maybe the Chief of Police and some mental health experts.
I can talk to our consultant who's very profound on all of this. I'm sure he'd be more than happy to sit on the panel.
Okay.
He's very versed on that.
When we were in Springfield, there was a session on it, and so I'm going to reach out to those people that presented it, too. But it is, you know, you know, a huge crisis now.
I'm sorry, um, Trustee Clark, I didn't hear what you said the subject of this was.
The opiate crisis.
Oh, okay.
So I think we were looking around February twenty-second, like at three in the afternoon.
I also know a lady that does that.
Oh, do you? Okay, well, I'm, welcome for any names and any suggestions.
I'll send you two.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Any other trustees? Have any reports?
I'm going to head up top of it. The Red Cross training, I reached out to the Brookfield Little League, Riverside Rockets Baseball, the Bulldogs Wrestling. There's great interest in an intensive Red Cross training. I just haven't gotten ahold of the, the rec departments yet. But all the other associations I've talked to are very interested, so.
Are you thinking of doing this on a Saturday?
Yeah, Saturday morning, nine to noon, however long the, the training is. I just, it's, it's free. I mean, I think the Red Cross does it for free.
I think there isn't a charge.
Is there?
Yeah, I think there's.
Well, it's not, it's not.
It's not asked for.
Yeah, I mean, it's not.
But there is a fee, yeah.
Yeah, it's not something that's going to break our bank. But I think it would just be a great way, if we could get fifty to a hundred youth coaches in the area to get the training, it'd be great. So initial outreach has been very positive. I'd like to get a little bit more.
I don't think we have room for fifty to a hundred, do we? Because it's pretty hands-on.
I don't, I don't think it's so much a matter of room, but I don't think they'll take that many at a time. Usually those trainings are more, you're right, very interactive.
Very interactive at twenty.
They don't want to have more than maybe fifteen or twenty. Fifty would be, we'd have to have multiple sessions.
Fifteen, I know, for a department, plus I think we could have fifteen men.
Right.
Yeah. So maybe if, you know, we sign up, if thirty sign up, we have two instructors come. We'll figure it out, but I'd like, I'd like to do a little more outreach and a little more firm commitments. But if all it takes is fifteen bodies, I think it'd be a good thought. But let me come back with a more firm report.
Please coordinate with us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mental Health Board, all I have for the Mental Health Board. There is no meeting in December, but we are having strategic planning starting tomorrow evening in the room. I will have a full report for you next month on how that's going.
Thank you, thank you. Trustee Drapka, nothing? Okay, thank you very much. Alright, onward to. Old Business. Again, like I reported, I really haven't worked that much on it, but I'm, with the inquiries that we're having, it's bringing up some more questions on the kinds of things we have to be well aware of. That's why I've given you each a list of the capacity of the rooms so you have some idea as we go forward in making some plans for utilization, you know, how much we actually should or can be doing. There are some limitations from the Fire Department on some of the space and so forth. Otherwise, the annual township levy, yes?
Policy, so is it still working in progress?
Yeah, as I said, I did not have the opportunity this month. There were a lot of other.
Sure, sure.
Things that were coming up, so I haven't put a lot more together. Again, I do plan to reach out to some of the partners that we would have to have in doing this. So I want to have some, maybe not preferred vendors, but a list of people that they could reach out to for certain things, like parking and valet and security and all those kinds of things. Anything else? Okay, then on to the township levy. I did give you preliminary, like a comparison of last year's levy and a proposed levy based on just the CPI last month. I didn't really hear any input, any inquiries about it until quite recently. So we do need to pass a levy tonight in order to comply with the dates that are required for us to file a levy. So it is prepared, as you see, it says copy. It's really like a draft version. And all of these numbers basically are simply with a two-point-one percent increase. Now, I realize that some of that, we would have to shift around later because I think she applied that to all of the salaries, some of which are not changeable. However, what, what was put in under supervisor clerk and so forth could also wind up being used for other salaries as, you know, we, we can always make those. This isn't budget. This is basically the levy to figure out where we might see some increases, some costs.
So do we need a motion then to approve the levy?
Yes.
So we?
I have a motion by Trustee Clark to approve the levy as presented with a total levy amount of one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Trustee Hollenbach. Is there any discussion?
So I have a, I have a question here. Why, what was the two-point-one percent number? Why two-point-one percent? Why not two-point-five percent? Why not one-point-eight percent? Why two-point-one?
Because that was the CPI. That was the Consumer Price Index amount for the year. And it's kind of a logical starting point. At this point, I'm really trying to work through my first cycle of everything, so I don't have a really good feel yet for whether we should be increasing more or less. Five percent would be the absolute cap before we would have to have open hearings and really come forth with a lot of debate about why we would go that high. The two-point-one percent was actually the amount that the, that the Mental Health Board had chosen to go with. Again, because, I mean, we know that we want to have more programs, so we're going to have some increases. There are some increases in costs that we have no control over, some contractual, you know, some, some things that we purchase and so forth. I mean, yes, we can shop the best price, but there are certain costs that go up regularly. We know that health insurance and those kinds of things go up. We know that we expect that we will have salary increases. We've had one retirement now. If we replace this person with a younger person, you know, expectations may be different. There might be health costs and things like that that we didn't have with a retiree. So the trouble with not increasing at all is that you lose the opportunity to, to create a new base from where you go in the future. So if, if your limit without having to really justify it is five percent, and you take nothing, then next year, your base is where it was the year before. So it kind of doesn't allow for any growth for the income for the programs. Now, understand that when we have a levy, and even when those taxes are collected, as people appeal their taxes and when they win, then tax money that we've already received is automatically taken back. I mean, we have kind of a bank with the treasures, with the County Treasurer's Office, and the treasurer giveth and the treasurer taketh away. I mean, I will have credits and debits on that account, and, and when they have, there are regular scheduled transfers, and they just automatically make those to our bank. But if there are debits because of appeals and so forth, then whatever they're holding may, I suddenly will see a deduction in that account. And so we don't get the transfer of money, even if it was approved by the levy.
So with the two-point- So with the 2.1%, do you see, I know you said you haven't studied the numbers as much, but do you see if we would have to go into reserves or would the 2.1 be adequate and be, we would be okay? Because my thing is I don't want to go into reserves.
Okay.
Right?
So again, the levy is different from the budget, but from what I can see, I've looked at the last several years of budgets, and every year, the money available, of course, always includes whatever we have in reserves, and many times, the anticipated expenditures are actually higher than the taxes that are anticipated to be collected. So when we don't get, so, you know, if we, if we do spend to the point that the budget allows, that we do have to dip into reserve to do it. The, I've looked at the numbers a little bit for the last few years on, like, the quickest way to figure out are our reserves changing is to look at the budget each year and look at what the cash on hand is. Now, sometimes that is a little bit deceptive because some, some costs may have accrued and not been paid, or we prepaid something and, you know, it, sometimes there's a little bit of difference in that, but the, there have been years, like, just prior to the most recent budget, there was quite a dip in that cash reserves, and I'm not sure, not aware of many, any really big projects, but I know that we went from roughly nine hundred thousand cash on hand as of the first of April of 2016 to seven hundred and seventy-five thousand cash on hand the beginning of April of 2017. That tells me that somewhere we had to go into reserves for something, and I haven't, I apologize, I haven't been able to figure out where exactly that happened and if there was some major expenditure, or if it was a lack of revenue that came in from the taxes, if there were a lot of appeals and we didn't get as much tax revenue as we expected. I've been watching the current expenditures based on the current budget, and right now, it looks like we're in really good shape on that. However, not having gone through a whole cycle, I don't know if there's some things that will seasonally be paid that just haven't been paid out yet, but will between now and the end of March. So forgive me if I'm still trying to get a good feel for this, but I, I wanted to be conservative, I wanted to go for a little bit of increase without, without hitting everybody's pocketbooks to an uncomfortable level. This is a total increase in the levy of roughly thirty-one thousand, so with fifteen thousand residents in the community, I know that we don't pay per capita and we pay based on real estate, but it comes to roughly two bucks a head, you know? So it's not a huge amount, and a large part of the levy, as you go through the detail, is the mental health, which is a large part of our responsibility. So that's basically my, my explanation of where I come from on going with just the CPI in terms of how much to, to go. And again, having been to a few sessions now of various either Township Officials of Illinois or Township Officials of Cook County, the basic recommendation to those of us who are new at it is, don't pass up increasing the levy somewhat, you know? Take something because you're going to run into expenses that you may not anticipate.
I believe our tax bill is like 1%.
Of the total taxes, right.
And that's part of the township, the margin, and that's all.
Right.
So we're not by any means trying to, you know, grab as much as we can. We have, we have projects coming up that we're going to have to face down the line. I think Supervisor Wilt is absolutely correct in saying, okay, let's grab something here, you know, 2.1%, whatever the case may be, and we're going to have to look at it in the future and, and see, you know, we definitely don't want to go into reserves. We've got, you know, a new roof that we're going to need to put on, and we've got to paint a bridge, and.
Tuck pointing.
And later on in the agenda, we're going to be talking about tuck pointing, and so I, I think this is probably the smart, for our first go around, you know, I think this is probably the smartest way of doing it. That's just my opinion, of course.
First of all, I'm against a reasonable, just because we can. I have not seen the need yet. I'm new, so I, I, again, it might be there, but I don't see the need for an extra thirty grand at this point, just to get the extra money. I would, however, be more than willing to examine the idea of, instead of just having a 2.1% overall, let's dedicate that money to something like maintenance of the building, the tuck pointing, the, what was he, our accountant, the, the audit that we had?
Said we can do that. That's more of a budgetary.
That's budgetary.
That's, that's when we do the budget.
That's when you can move that money around and you can actually see the actual numbers. This is an estimate, basically, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong. It's an estimate of what the funds that we are going to collect. We may not get that thirty-one thousand.
Right.
We may get five thousand.
Right.
Depending on the appeals.
Right.
And as Fran, her assessor, has said, you know, people are repea, appeal their taxes in record numbers, so, you know, a good, good amount of those people, Fran does a great job, and.
And I would say that, I, I would bet that if the new tax code actually eliminates the credit for real estate taxes, that real estate taxes are going to be appealed even more.
Oh, yes, absolutely. So this is just an estimate, and you've got to keep it by law, you have to keep it under 5% unless the CPI goes above 5%, and then I think you can change it, you can, you can adjust it then, but if it's below 5%, the match you can, you can look at is 5%.
I'm just reluctant to do it that way because we pass it, we, we get the extra money. A year from now, we go, oh, we need a tuck point, we could have had sixty-two thousand dollars set aside for it.
But we can do that in the budget.
In the budget, we can.
We can, yes, in the budget, we can move that around. This is just to get for, for our overall costs, we're anticipating, we might have an increased need of thirty-one thousand. We expect that we will need thirty-one thousand more to do business next year than we did this year. That is a very generic thing, it's, and, you know, it's a very small, you know, 2.1%, that's it. That's not to say we're going to spend all of this, but we also, if last year we dipped almost a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand into reserves to set this budget, I mean, we didn't dip into them yet, but I mean, we, we allocated, we only had a hundred and fifty thousand less in reserve to meet the anticipated expenditures of the budget over, you know, that's over and above what we get in taxes. We do need to maintain reserves for those big expenditures that we might have. Any other discussion? Are we ready to take a vote on this?
Oh, I would just like to add one thing. We have to not just approve the levy, we have to adopt and approve the levy, so can you state in your original motion, trustee Clark?
Uh.
That we should add the, adopt and approve?
The, adopt the annual township, I make a motion that we adopt the annual township tax levy.
Adopt and approve it.
Adopt and approve it?
Yes.
And the truth in taxation?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I second.
Okay, then I have a motion and a second to approve and adopt the township levy as presented.
Do we have to approve the Mental Health Board separately?
It's within this whole levy.
It's all together.
It's all packaged in this.
Very good, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we had a road and bridge division, they also would, would submit to us their recommendations if they anticipated, but we don't have such a creature, so.
Okay.
All right.
I do have a couple of questions. So for the tax to the max, that would be our 5%? You know, we hear everyone, oh, all these boards are taxing to the max, especially school boards and things.
That would be 5% without, yeah, without any kind of.
So our max tax right now would be the 5%.
That is correct.
Or we're going one point, or 2.1.
Well, we, I mean, hypothetically, we could do, we could say a hundred and fifty percent, but if we do that, then we would have to do a rough run.
Right, without having to go to a rough run.
Right.
So it's the 5%.
Right.
Yeah, the, the, the other questions, fine.
Okay, are we ready for the vote then?
Let's do the roll call.
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Looper?
No.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And that includes the truth in taxation within that? I mean, there is a separate document, I believe, for that, but, um, okay. That was part of the motion though, right? The truth in taxation? All right. Very good, then on to new business, Mental Health Board.
Is it related to the town that's on the town hall business?
Come on in.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, I mean, we've, please, that's all right, I mean, is it regarding the levy?
The mental health policy, the town hall rental policy.
Oh, we actually didn't do a lot of discussion, so if you'd like to address that, you're most welcome to.
Did you sign in?
I did, I will do that.
Yes, sign in and then we'll ask that you identify yourself.
Okay. Excuse me, I have a question here, please.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandy Briolot and I reside at 107 Blooming Bank Road in Riverside, and I'm a former president of the Riverside Junior Women's Charity, and I belong to a few other organizations in town, and we would love the opportunity to be able to rent the hall here and abide by whatever rules the Township Committee comes up with for us to be able to do that. So I guess my question is, what are your thoughts and is it a possibility that we could open that up?
We.
For rental and allowing alcohol, I think.
Right, we are working on that, it's many, many factors.
I'm sure.
That need to happen and take place.
Okay.
Before we can rent it.
Is there any?
Alcohol.
Okay, is there anything that the Riverside residents can do? Because I know that it's allowed at the train station and people can get special riders on insurance policies to have alcohol at the library.
Is there a particular advantage you have in mind?
Oh, my gosh, there's so many. There's, no, nothing that's coming up, but there are.
What is the next one that would be coming up?
Well, Riverside Junior Women's Charity has usually two fundraisers a year. I also know that the Riverside Dancing Club is interested in also renting the space for a dinner dance, and I know other places have rules as far as like, maybe the organization has to pay for a police presence or special insurance rider, so I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Those are all factors that we've already been discussing.
That's part of our training.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Because we're trying to put it together to make sure that we're covering all our risks.
Oh, absolutely, and we appreciate that this is a beautiful building and it's a historical site, and we would want it to remain that way.
We have concerns like, you know, what kind of additional staffing we would have to have.
Sure.
Just for the maintenance, for setup, for, but we have already talked about, obviously the village would have to give the permits for the alcohol, insurance would have to be obtained, our own coverage of the building does not cover that.
Okay.
So we would probably have to go out and get some.
Absolutely.
Additional coverage for ourselves. Security would be a factor, what, what rental we would actually charge, how much, you know?
Sure.
And would it be different for.
And that's absolutely fair.
Organization as opposed to individuals.
Right.
So these are all considerations we're working on. We appreciate that you're, you're voicing your desire for it because.
And I represent a lot of people who feel the same way.
Well, and that, that was the sense that we had, but we haven't had.
Yeah. Would you like me to bring people next, to the next meeting? Would that help?
We need to, we know that organizations want this, but we're still fine tuning.
Okay.
Our things, and as far as like dance club goes, our kitchen is not totally set up for a caterer or something like a Derek Dance.
Sure, sure. I know usually.
I don't think it's big enough because it's.
Okay.
It's a dance club limited to a hundred couples, isn't it?
Yeah, but usually the dances are anywhere from like thirty couples to like eighty couples.
Oh, okay.
So, so usually there are different times of the year, there are different sizes.
Okay.
Just this evening, I provided all the trustees with.
Oh, good.
With the capacity for each room.
Yeah.
Because that's not something that anybody readily realizes. We are considered, we probably would have to have people bring in caterers that, you know, don't need a full service kitchen.
Exactly.
Because I doubt that we would be investing that kind of thing.
Right, just a warming.
Yeah, I mean, we are, I would say that this board is inclined to go in that direction.
Good.
We're just making sure that we have everything in place, and my thinking at this point is that probably our fiscal year begins on April 1st, and I think that's probably where we should target for.
Right.
Because we, until then, we're under an old budget that doesn't, doesn't assume any of those extra costs or that income.
Sure, sure. Well, let me know if there's anything that I can do to help, if you think that bringing more people to a meeting would help, or.
Or maybe a letter from your organization.
That's a great idea. I'll have a couple of organizations.
You know, a little explanation of how you would appreciate, what, how you would utilize it if it were available.
Great.
And, you know, maybe even what kind of cost you'd be willing to assume.
Okay.
In, in, you know, recognizing that there might be some extra costs, you know?
Wonderful, and maybe we can research what the train station requires and what the library requires so that you have that information as well.
Right.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. Thank you for letting me go out of turn.
No problem, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy Christmas. All right, we have new business, we have reappointment of Mental Health Board people, and, did you ever hear back whether, there was some question whether?
We're not, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Somebody's going to reappoint Barbara Nippel.
Okay.
Reappoint her.
Right. Both of them are willing to serve?
Yes.
Okay, so we have before us, and I think we'll take these individually then, correct? We have a proposal to reappoint Barbara Nippel to the Riverside Township Mental Health Board for a term commencing January 1, 2018, and terminating on December 31, 2021.
I made the motion to approve Barbara Nippel.
I second.
So I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution of the board trustees appointing Barbara Nippel for the term as stated, January 1, 2018, until December 31, 2021. Is there any discussion? Then call for the vote.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Looper?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Also have a resolution before the board to approve the appointment of Mental Health Board member Thomas Dunleavy, Dunlevy, Dunlevy, how does he pronounce it? Dunlevy, for a term commencing January 1, 2018, terminating on December 31, 2021.
So.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution appointing the reappointment of Thomas Dunlevy for the Mental Health Board for January 1, 2018, until December 31, 2021. Any discussion?
I don't understand this one because you have here adopted in 2015 that he's going to be terminated on 2019.
There, we had conflicted.
So it's a miscommunication.
Well, that's just it. We, we weren't sure, we thought that that was it, however, then the board provided us with a list of people and their appointments, so we weren't sure if perhaps that was an error and he was fulfilling an unexpired term. so we weren't sure if perhaps that was an error and he was fulfilling an unexpired term, so we are just-
So we're, we're going to reappoint because we're not sure of what happened, if it was a screw up?
He took, uh, didn't he take someone to place that rubber?
We had, we had an opening for, for a number of months.
Yeah.
So it, it's pretty hard to figure out, we also had another one, Joseph Truckiani, who is, uh, you know, he came on after that, so... Um, but, uh, Tom, in talking to him, had, he wasn't sure when he was appointed and when he was supposed to expire, so we're just gonna reappoint.
So this, this resolution would basically supersede Resolution twenty fifteen dash three.
That's right.
That's in your book. Okay, there being no further discussion, would you take the, uh, vote, please?
Trustee Looper?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Dracka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes. Thank you. All right, and, um, next item is participation in the village's ru- of review of public facilities. All that we have here is the information from the newspaper and the letter that I received then from the, um, village manager about those matters as well. Are there any questions or discussions? I mean, I know I brought this up under my report as well.
I, I, I don't feel the need for a facility study, I mean, what would that entail? Um, I also, for the record, I think that it's a little, um, upsetting that we have this email two days after the news story and not two days before the news story. Um, but, I mean, that's, I guess, how the village manager wants to go that route. So, but, I mean, I don't, I don't see what a facility study would look like for us, um, and I don't know if it's really worth our money for that.
Well, and that's why I said, well, let me know what, what kind of, you know, have them contact me so I can see what they would even study here because I don't know that there is any need, the, the village's other property that they need to utilize better than they're utilizing. And I think we're, I think you're correct that we're kind of on track using our own facilities.
There was a, um, an inventory and a building assessment done, I think it was in two thousand fifteen. Do you remember that, Trustee Clark? I have a copy of it, I, I just didn't bring it with me tonight.
That the village did?
No, that the township did. I've actually sat there and gone through all our meetings, which is-
I don't remember the-
I don't remember that.
I'll email it up, it was, um, an inventory of literally everything we had.
Oh, it was an inventory.
Oh, it was an inventory, yeah.
It just wasn't the inventory of everything that was, uh-
Right, that's just the personal property within.
Yeah, we needed that for insurance.
For insurance, and for the others also.
I, I think there's, there's another document included with that, it wasn't just the inventory. Um, so I think we could, we should look at that to start what, what we're doing, I think we definitely need to do a building assessment for maintenance issues. When's the roof doing?
But I think that's different than their facilities, uh, their, yeah, than they're doing. And I think that's something that we should probably hire an engineer to take a look at what, uh, what the building issues that we should anticipate.
Was that, um, our needs, I think, are more sticks and bricks, you know, bricks and mortar, we have to figure out what's going on with our building, when the roof needs to be replaced, when tuck pointing is happening.
Right.
I think what the village is looking for more is, how do we maximize the use of our, all our disparate properties? So I don't think that two quite match up, there might be some synergy there, but I just don't think it's, I don't think it's something that we would need to do, I'm more than interested to hear what they have to say and what their proposal would be.
I strongly suspect that part of the, um, the reason they wanted to approach us about it is maybe they think they want to use more of the building and they wanted us to evaluate whether we really need it so much. And I don't think that that's something that we're ready to, you know, give away, I think that we certainly have community uses for the building that, uh, that would be a priority, but of course, um, this also, you know, this note from the village manager also included the tuck pointing issue, so that's why I thought we'd better bring it up. That is more emergency or more, um, serious matter for us at this point, but, um, yeah.
I mean, I, I was a little chagrined as well at the, oh, we hired someone, uh, we already, oh, by the way, do you wanna come? But I, I think Trustee Lumpston, um, and I actually had a conversation, going, we should get together, we should look at the building as a together and how to maintain it, so I, I don't think it was necessarily forgetting about us or anything, I think it was just, oh, wait a minute, why don't we throw the township into it, so...
Well, and that's why, I mean, the way it was worded here is in terms of evaluating equipment compliance, if that's what this, this group does, if they can evaluate some of that, then maybe it's worth it, but I said, unless I have a quote as to what kind of a cost there would be, you know, have them contact me and that's about where it's ended, I haven't heard anything at this point.
And the scope, you wanna know the scope of it.
Right, right.
Okay.
Would we also be able to, because I know there's been talk, you know, everyone says, well, the township owns the building and the village owns the land, yet we're paying for landscaping and they're paying for tuck pointing.
Well, but there are agreements about that, too, we're paying for, we're not really paying for the landscaping in terms of the, the major items, we're cutting the grass. In return, they maintain the sidewalks, we maintain the stairs, I mean, where there's kind of, you know, there's-
So, I think we're moving on to the next item, so I, can I make a motion to table this request to have a facility review?
I don't know if you have to, but I think it's, basically, we could just have Supervisor Will just keep us posted on this, especially since-
I'm not gonna spend any money on a study unless this board wants it, and I'm not going to even consider it unless I know what that cost might be.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay. Very good. Then can we move on? Uh, well, tuck pointing, we've already pretty much discussed, but-
Yeah, my question here is going back to Trustee Lumpford's question, so, I mean, what exactly, what part of the building would be, we'd be responsible for, for tuck pointing? And, you know, I mean, the way I'm getting it is if they're gonna go out and get bids to do tuck pointing, but they're only doing the part of the building that they own, which is, you know, five, five feet hypothetically of the building, and we own, you know, a hundred feet of the building, shouldn't we be going out and getting the bid? And then having them reimburse us rather the other way around? Because if they own a smaller portion of the building than we do, it should, in my opinion, it should be the other way around.
Okay, so they've identified their, in their own facilities, that they really need to do some work, there, they have some more critical, um, deterioration than we do.
Okay.
Part of it is though, being the west side of the building, they get the weather, uh, they're right off the parking lot, there's, they're not protected by, by shrubbery and things like that, the same way the rest of the building is. They've already identified that as a need and it's not a matter of them going out for bid and us paying them for it, it's a matter of coordinating the efforts, us also getting a bid at the same time, probably hiring the same contractor, probably getting a better price because it's a bigger job than, uh, than you would for just part of it, making sure that they, they're willing to do the, uh, the legwork with the, um, the historical society and, um, the preservation commission, all of those people that they probably have a better relationship with than we do. So, in that regard, I don't have any objection to that, I, you know, whether we should be taking the lead on it, if they've already started the ball rolling, we all are subject to getting the proper bids and so forth, so if they're gonna do the historical leg, legwork to find out what should the building look like, what did it look like originally? And what would the, um, the preservation commission say it should look like now? I'd rather have them do that legwork rather than when the, the doors on the building needed to be replaced because they were deteriorating, having to then work through both the village because they give the permits, understand that, too, they, the village grants the permits, so we might as well have them taking some of that lead. I, I mean, I don't know that we should stop them and say, no, we'll do it ourselves, they-
I get that, I get that, and, and I, I, I get it, and I guess...
There would be an intergovernmental agreement probably for this as well.
No, I mean, I, I get that we would, you know, it's easier for them to take the lead on it, but on the opposite point, it is, I feel like it is our responsibility and some of the things we should be taking the lead on and working with them, and it's great that you point that out, not you, it's great that you point out the need for it, that's fine, we agree, let's do it. But let's, I, I would, I'm just, I just have a problem with having them take full control over it. I would rather go through the, the committees and all that because it's, it's ours, this is ours.
Well, we would certainly participate in those discussions as well.
Yeah.
Uh, but the other thing is, quite frankly, they have a public works department. They have people who have certain skills that we don't have on staff.
Yeah.
So if they identify something in a building that we use together, uh, you know, the common areas are ours, our responsibility, I mean, certainly going forward, we can look at things differently, but they identified the need before we did and shame on us, I suppose, but, uh, you know, I'm not a contractor or an engineer to have identified, oh, we've got this, I tend to come in and out of the front door, walk around the building once in a while, but I don't notice certain things and, and I too sometimes struggle with, okay, where does their part end and where does our part begin?
So going back to what Trustee Lumpford brought up about the, those intergovernmental agreements, so, I mean, do we, do we have a specific layout of saying, okay, we're taking care of the grass and you're taking care of the sidewalks? I mean, is that written down somewhere?
There are agreements down there, yeah.
And, and, and the, you said before that the rent issue was never taken care of?
That was, it was never finalized, it, I, you know, I was, um, anecdotally getting stories about, well, you know, we used to get rent, but we don't, and it was like, okay, when did we get this and when did it stop? I don't know if there were some fees that had been agreed to before, I found lots of paper, many copies of the same agreement, I found, uh, various versions of it, after meetings, other things were addressed and, you know, there were some, uh, changes, but even, I even found correspondence from our law firm that said, yeah, we drafted that, but we never heard that you approved it and we could not find anywhere where it was approved, so...
Wasn't there some type of an agreement in this, maybe one of your case studies that was? You know, we would, uh, take, they wouldn't have to pay rent if they took care of the snow over in Riverside Lawn.
That, I think that was actually, ironically, I think that's been part of the agreement for a long time, but there was, there was some movement, I think, again, somebody wanted to do something or use something a different way, so it was like, wait, well, we better identify, where is this ownership? So I have several files in my office that I'm still trying to plow through, how many of them are exact copies? How many of them, where is there a difference in them? Some of them are annotated, some are not, so, you know, sometimes I-
What was the, uh, the, the dollar figure?
It was a minimal amount, it was not a large amount.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, it was pointed out when I, when I actually said, wasn't there some kind of a rental agreement? It was like, well, we think that by, um, that there's some, uh, offset of that because we do this and this, so I was like, okay, well, let's... That's when I dove into the files to see and I could not find an executed copy anywhere.
I would like to know what exactly the additions are on this building that are theirs.
Okay, I'll get that information for you.
Because I don't want them starting to, and I'm trying to look out for them, I mean, I'm, I'm trying, I don't want them to be tuck pointing something and then paying, reimbursing us for something that's not theirs, you know?
Okay, um, I think that even our insurance, um, records will have some of that information, which is where some of this got started, I think, as well.
Yeah, I think moving forward, especially if we are gonna have to address some of these deferred maintenance issues, it would be nice to have clearly defined and agreed upon, um, property lines, so to speak. I, I think we really need to think that up, because there are so much anecdotal stories, I've heard them all, I've heard from, we owe you rent, you owe us rent, we plow this, you do that, uh, I, I'd like the ambiguity taken out, so in the future, we, oh, okay, this is our tuck pointing, that's your tuck pointing, it, it, it clears things up a lot.
I know of a former supervisor who hired a college student for the entire summer to dive through old records to try to find stuff and it was overwhelming, that, I mean, to find anything, and so much of it was, there were discussions held, but nothing was ever finalized.
So, I guess then where do we go from here with, with the, the tuck pointing? I, I, I'm s- I'm sure that some, they need a decision or whatever it is that they, I mean, what do you, what do you want us to do tonight here and?
Nothing, nothing, I, I just want you to know that I'm investigating, how bad is our situation? What, trying to firm up what is our responsibility, what is their responsibility, how much of, you know, um, what is the scope of the project so that we then, when there are bids put out, that we can participate properly?
I do have, uh, one other, uh, question about, do we have a catalog of work performed on the building? Do we know the last time it was tuck pointed, how old is the roof? Have we maintained the boiler? I mean, do we know what?
Yes, we have, we have documentation of all of that, whether it's easily accessible fashion is another story, there's a lot of files on a lot of different things and, uh, fortunately, staff has been, the office staff has been around for a long time, so they at least know where to look for things.
Yeah.
I think we did some work, the old board did some work on the boiler, definitely.
Yeah, that was a couple of years ago, maybe even last year.
Yeah, yeah, there's been some recent work there.
I think that's a maintenance issue.
It, well, it's regularly maintained, but there have been some, some workarounds, you know, it's an old setup, so there were some changes that have even happened since I'm here, there were some, some valves that were-
Pipes, remember a pipe was leaking.
Yeah.
But I think that'd be a good starting point for us, if, if we repaired the, if we replaced the roof eighty years ago and it has a hundred-year lifespan or fifty-year lifespan, I think it would help us focus the issues that are coming down the road at us.
I think that's, you know, last meeting, we talked about having a strategic planning session and I think that would be an excellent part of our strategic planning session, is to, you know, do, how old is the roof? How long should it last? When are we expecting that we're gonna have to redo it?
Yeah.
Yeah, sometime after the New Year, we need to do it.
Right, yeah.
Very good. Any other questions, please? Okay. And, um, I already told you about the classic conversations, you have their request here, so if you wanna do any independent, uh, research, Andrew also brought up, um, and provided you with things from the website, so you can see where the Christian worldview commentary comes from. Because I, you know, it was just kind of-
Is this, uh, again, would we charge rent for this or is this-
Well, that's just it, I mean, I don't know what category to put them in, by the time this would become effective, we would have, I'm expecting, some kind of a rental policy. So this is just another one of those thoughts about, is this the kind of rental we wanna do?
That makes sense.
So do we, do we, are you, are they expecting an answer?
I'm not looking for an answer, pardon?
Are they, are they expecting an answer?
No, they know that we have some, some- No, they know that we have some, some work to do and that we're, uh, looking at our building utilization. They know that I have some concerns because they wanted so much of the building for so much time. Summers, um, we have just one room that's taken over by the summer camp, as you saw the, thank you. And sometimes that becomes very disruptive within the building. I mean, on movie day, uh, when the kids are leaving the building, you can tell them a hundred times, please be quiet, there's a movie going on. You know, kids are kids. And now these people would be kids with parents because it's a teaching kind of opportunity. So I expect that there would be a different kind of discipline to it than kids on, at summer camp. But, um, you know, these are considerations that we have in terms of how we do want to rent. Do we want to make the rental things for this type of thing as well? Is this something that would be part of a pay, pay for use? Or is it just a community group? They don't seem to really be an established community group, and that's why it was kind of vague. And I wanted you to know that we've been approached and that we're trying to work out that. Okay? All right, and then, uh, is there anything else?
This pillars ball?
Well, the pillars ball, I don't know if you, if anybody's interested, if, I don't, I'm not sure whether the, um, the township has ever sent anyone to it or...
That's, uh, one of the groups from the mental health board.
Right.
And we've already taken a vote, they need their money by a certain time, so, um, if you guys are interested in the others, there's four total, uh, for Segwin, CSS, pillars, and helping hand.
They all have their big fundraisers.
They all have a fundraiser, and we believe in supporting those. And so, uh, if you are interested, I will make sure that you guys get an invitation.
Okay.
I brought something up to trustee Halandback earlier. Um, I would be interested in entertaining a, um, an idea regarding these four balls coming up that, um, maybe as the township as a whole, uh, buys a table at each one of these and first goes to the, the, the first shack goes to the mental health individuals because you're the board members that deal with them on a regular basis.
Right.
And if you have, say, seven, uh, of the ten filled up, but you have three left over, then it would come to the rest of the board to see. But I would, I would be interested in...
I can do that, I can say, you know, a table of ten, uh, you know, we'll buy a table of ten. Who's going from the mental health board? Absolutely, that's not a problem, I think that's a great idea.
I, I, you know, that way, you know, our policy...
Show support throughout.
Exactly, and our policy is we buy a table at each one of your events, right? And that's not ten people are going, not five people are going to this one. We buy a table at each of your events and it's all equal, you know what I mean?
I'll bring that up to the board, I think that's an excellent idea, and I'm sure they'll have no problem with that.
Um, maybe we, um, switch areas, because the table at the pillars ball is twenty-two fifty. So maybe we do one ball a year and rotate to different ball.
Well, see, the, the mental health board supports each one of those, uh, organizations. Um, they go to each ball to show their support. Like I was telling trustee Drapka, it depends on the amount of people. I tend to make maybe one a year. But, uh, w- we do show our support for the organizations that we are connected with, so... Um, if you want me to bring that up, trustee Drapka, I will. Or if you want me to say, we pick one a year, that's up to you.
It's just a suggestion, take back to your mental health board, you know, I mean. I, 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 just speaking on behalf of myself, I would love to support the, the, the organization as well, you know? Coming from this board, you know, and maybe, you know, I'm...
And I, I think that's a terrific idea.
So, just, I didn't know...
That's fine, I understand, yeah. I will absolutely bring that up in January.
Okay. So there's no motion at this point?
Are there, just as a question, are, uh, all the balls this expensive?
I would guess yes, they're right in the same price range, yes.
No, so each table would be two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
In that range, yes.
And there's four of them a year?
There's four a year.
That's a lot of money. I was just putting them there.
Uh, so, we'll think about that. It's not that I don't want to support them, but I think, you know, you were, we're talking about nine thousand dollars.
Right, I know, but on the, my point was on the flip side, if you have, say, five people from the mental health bo- board going to this pillars, right? But then next time at Segwin's, there's only two people that go. And then the next time at, you know, helping hand, there's ten people who go. You know, it's not, it's not equal there, you know what I mean?
And that's how it works, whoever can go, that's what we, we buy the tickets for.
Right, and so my suggestion was just the policy would be to buy a table at each one of yours and that way, boom, it's all, we, we support you by buying a table, that's it. Not we support you by buying ten tickets to this one and then five tickets to this one and two tickets to that one.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just, and I, you know...
And that's coming not out of our, out of the township budget, that we budget for a full table at each one of those.
The mental health board?
Yes, it comes out of the mental health board budget.
Okay, so...
So it was just, I understand that they don't have, they, they do it that way because, you know, five people go here or two people go there. But if they bought a table and they couldn't fit it, then...
Fill it.
Fill it, then it would come to us, right.
Okay.
That was just my suggestion, I don't know if the mental health board would like to do that, you know?
Hey, the mental health board would take care of the ticket price for a table out of our budget. If they, if we have, let's say, five people going, then I would send out an email or at the next board meeting and say, we have these available, if you or your, if somebody and their wife wants to go or bring a guest, let me know, we have five tickets left for this. And, and I think it's, it's a great idea because it shows a little cohesiveness between the mental health board and the township board. I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea too. I thought you meant that the township would buy a table for each ball.
No, one combined, yes.
Okay, all right, I understand now.
Yeah, that's what, unified front.
Yeah, okay, good, that's what...
So a lot of these fundraisers are for, to get people to give them money, but aren't we already giving them sizable chunks of money?
They put good use to it, yes. They don't, they don't make up, uh, you know, these fundraisers are done not just to fill their coffers, it's to help them, they, they use that in their budget, which we contribute to, but we take care of our Riverside Township. Every township that is involved with any of these organizations, uh, supports these charity events to show their support for the charity. Um, any township around here that has the, so, and a lot of them sponsor, like Lion's Township, which is much bigger than us. They, uh, they sponsor, you know, they're a gold sponsor, a silver sponsor, which is, you know, five, five, seven thousand dollars. And by, you know, the way that the state pays on things, it, it really does come in handy. And they're not making, you know, millions of dollars on this, now, I think a hundred twenty-five, maybe a hundred thirty thousand for the event, which in the grand scheme of things isn't really that much, but it does help them.
Yeah.
Bless you again.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the approval of the warrants.
Warrants, yes, thank you.
Okay, I move that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, December two thousand seventeen, in the amount of eight thousand, three hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents as presented to this board the twelfth day of December two thousand seventeen. Uh, second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Then, please call the roll.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Halandback?
Yes.
Trustee Lucker?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilk?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, uh, I make a motion that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, December two thousand seventeen, in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Payroll warrant, December two thousand seventeen, in the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents. Health warrant, December two thousand seventeen, in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars and ninety cents. Grants, uh, December two thousand seventeen, in the amount of eight thousand, five hundred dollars. General assistance warrants, December two thousand seventeen, in the amount of two thousand, two hundred dollars. Township radio players warrant, December two thousand seventeen, in the amount of two hundred dollars. Food pantry warrant, December two thousand seventeen, in the amount of eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-four cents.
Uh, trustee Clark, can I just correct you on, uh, the utility warrants, it was three thousand, seven eighty-nine and twenty-two cents, you said twenty cents.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just wanted to correct, let, let, let the record be corrected.
Let the record be corrected.
Okay, I have that motion, do I hear a second?
I second it.
May I call the roll call?
Trustee Lucker?
Yes.
Trustee Halandback?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilk?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Then, thank you, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Boy, that was not very enthusiastic. All in favor? All opposed?